Are we ready? We're gonna call the city of running budget workshop. The order is scheduled for Monday, August eighteenth, twenty five, by Friday.
Heavenly Father, just one thank you for letting us be here safely tonight. We ask the chief guide of council and the community to help us to make the best decisions and just lead us, be with our country, keep us safe and strong, be with its children as they start new school year in Jesus name.
I mean.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, does everybody have theirs up there? I have a couple extra. I put two sheets at last week's meeting, so that was the only changes.
Okay, I got those two sheets. I have those two sheets.
Y'all want to meet them? I just need to know what else y'all need done, 'cause we gotta do our tentative meeting.
I talked to Jimmy today, he needs to add ten percent roof flooring bill. Also, there'll be the, uh... This last year, we didn't have to pay for the SCADA system on the three wheels. This is about a hundred dollars a piece for wheels. You're gonna have to pay for that this coming addition project. Also, uh, for every generator we put in, it'll be a final one on our flat line.
Five hundred for each generator one, or a hundred for each generator one?
It's five.
For a hundred?
No.
Okay, I was gonna say, we won't have everybody over.
I just sent you the bill for the past year, I mean, upcoming year.
Okay.
I think it's due now for upcoming year.
And plus also we have, um, uh, you can come and track on somebody coming and servicing generators once you use them.
Wait, did that need to change yet?
And the wells, it's gonna be how much a year? A well, a year, okay.
What did you say, it's gonna be for generator?
Uh, a little bigger.
Per generator?
Per generator.
So it's fifteen?
No, it's more than that. It's gonna be more than that, it's gonna what size it is.
The generator?
So we're talking fifteen hundred dollars for the year on the wells, and then?
That's on the communication. That's not gonna do it.
I know, but that's what I was trying to get straight, and then it's five hundred per generator?
For communications.
Okay, what's the generator? From the wells to the generator, I got confused.
Well, off the, the three well sites, we put in a SCADA system last year. And they run them cell phones, and they bill you annually for each site. They just sent me a bill, and I pulled it to Candace. It's fifteen hundred dollars for three sites, so I'm assuming it'll be five hundred for each generator. And I know the straight field when y'all pay the grant, we'll also have that on that. According to that.
What is the straight, Jim, you'd say twenty? What'd you say? I didn't hear what you said about straight.
The SCADA system will be five hundred dollars a year, service. Now, service and the generators, sort of, how big they are.
Yep.
Probably, uh, we probably gonna put a bunch of them up to the valves per generator, 'cause one like at the plant will be a lot more now.
So that'll be three thousand?
So, get all of it, every little special, no, I mean, there is.
I don't know how much money, how many you put in.
But it costs more than five hundred a year for a decent site.
We won't have those in for the entire year, because that project is not gonna be completed until probably, uh, May of next year. So, it won't be for the whole year. Right now, we've got thirty-two thousand-ish. Boy. That was after, um, I took out Chad's salary. So there was around thirty-two thousand. If you go to your front page expenditure, it's made it down at the bottom. Um, that could really all go into order sewer, to be honest.
So what's it total again?
Um, it can go to repairs and maintenance or operating supplies, because they use it. Um, y'all just have to realize that we're starting the year behind. So, we're not starting with an extra thirty-two thousand. We've, that all takes time to build up, but we're starting basically in the red, 'cause we still don't have all the bills paid. And y'all did want me to look and see what funds there was for, um, the plant. I believe y'all still have a twenty-two thousand dollar checking account that's marked for, um, sewer at regions. Every.
Jason, you gonna have to buy paint also for it. Paint field? That'll be reimbursed, how do you work that?
If you do it before it's in the items, advertised and all of that thing, it's not gonna be reimbursed. It has to go through the process. So what, what Fred said, if you wanna get the belt, what is it, belt press fixed? After Airmark gives it the rundown and all the specs on it, give it a deal, let him write it up. We can put it in the paper for thirty days, then we can get that approved to have that repair done. But everything has to be done that way. And there, if that doesn't fall, if those repairs don't fall in the scope of work that that grant is for, then they're not gonna be what people will pay for it. Um, they think the belt press will, but... And that's, I mean, that's, that's all I've been told, I mean, I can't, that's all I know.
I'll give him a deal tomorrow, nothing on. You got an house on.
What did Airmark, Airmark say?
I really thought that they wouldn't be able to repair the belt press, but they would be able to. They're not talking about replacement, they're talking about upgrading. It's all messed up. But on top of that, the city, I understood him right, just to get it up and going, probably not a high cost. We'll know later, uh, with the city to buy them few parts that they need, and basically, a few sensors.
We can go back.
You could go back to working, now when the grant comes, they'll probably upgrade the panel, go through it completely. But he had told Jason that. I mean, he had a run in today, but we didn't have foot. He said it was a couple of sensors, and we actually had one from the construction. It's part of the family, put it on there, but it needs a couple more. But I can probably have you impressed on that, whenever he got those.
So that's better than what we were expecting last week.
And I would suggest.
They would be able to waste, they, then?
We put the two or three sensors on there, who are you? If the sludge coat and the polypus system are working, I guess it says, they are, we should go to start wrestling.
That's great news.
And then when the grant comes, it will upgrade everything.
I needed something this afternoon.
How that sounds better.
So on the budget, you've got around thirty-two, you know you're gonna have repairs coming that aren't gonna be covered on the grant. Um, I think our operating supplies is gonna go down, I will just put it out here. We've got an eleven thousand dollar bill in there that has not been paid yet for a bunch of chemicals that are not gonna be used. So, I don't know if they can be returned or not, but it's a waste. The city doesn't have that kind of money to waste. And, um, I'm hoping to make sure that they don't get ordered again. But as of right now, we still have an eleven thousand dollar bill sitting there, I have not, I haven't mailed it.
Can we try to return it?
If I can get in touch with the person, I don't know what their policy, but they're probably not gonna take it back.
Well, see if they can return it. It's in the bit. It's supposed to be there. Yeah, that kind of order needs to be, so.
So, with this thirty-two thousand in mind, I took out the cemetery mowing. So do you wanna put that back, or do you want our public works to do it and save that money? If it doesn't get done, it's gonna look terrible.
What it is, that can be.
But I'm just.
They don't have, they don't have to mow around here. Figure out, it looks around here.
So that's.
Didn't they do that before? Wasn't they doing it before?
Well, originally, when y'all took that contract out, I wanna say you had two employees.
Just all in hand, was two. Yeah, and then we have thirty. Three, so why, I can't, we take that off, 'cause I was looking at that seven thousand, that's a lot of money that we could be saving.
The contract is up, so it's your pleasure, I just need to know if I'm putting it back in or leaving it out.
It's only one more boy, probably wanted two more boys. Are both the all doors operational now?
I only ever see Rusty on one, so I don't know.
I know we had two, 'cause I think one of them was needed repaired.
I'm not, do you know if they're both working? Have you seen?
Yep.
I think they're both working. I know, the only thing that lawnmower I know of that's not working was the one that's had the rig that's like thirty-seven years old. And they told us that it was, 'cause remember whenever we took it over, like, there was no oil, no nothing ever put in it?
Yeah.
So Matt got it back, and it worked for a little while, and it's kind of, it's...
Not.
Something's not working on it, and it's gonna cost more to fix it than it's worth, because you could buy a new one for pretty much what you would have to do to that one. So they, Rusty and them, they're using their lawnmowers, and they weren't using two. They just cut it with two last week, I think. 'Cause Logan and Rusty were on one, and I think it takes them maybe a couple hours to cut.
They cut, the rig fields too?
They cut everywhere, all the parts, 'cause that was never in my contract. So, but I just give them, like, give them one for two weeks.
Tell me, um, Candace, exactly, when is that contract gonna?
It is up now.
It's been up, and we have.
We've just been going on up. Y'all, until I tell y'all to, to not cut it. And so they cut it twice a month during, up until October, I wanna say, and then they don't, you know, they cut it once a month. Your time is gonna come in your weeding, not the...
Not the mores.
'Cause you can't mow very much of it, it's mostly probably weeding.
And almost like Matt does a lot of the weeding, and we do have, Darren actual, like, baseball, like, I do, like, he's gonna cut it, and then trades, he's cut it a couple times, because they come and use, like, so... I do have people that cut it other than the city guys at times, but Matt and Chad was mainly the guys that weeded.
But at the cemetery, though, your, your time is the weeding, that's where the time comes in.
And we don't let, if the contract's gonna go up, I don't think I'm gonna need to do that.
She, she didn't tell me, when I, I spoke with her last week, and she, they had not gone up. She said they were gonna stay the same if we, if we continued on, as of far as this year.
Will we open it back up and see if you get it for a better price?
If that's what y'all wanna do.
There's been some negative comments about the cemetery grass on social media lately.
Yeah, I mean.
I got a phone call about it the other day.
Oh, yeah, needs to be mowed for sure. I like, kept up with, but, I mean, if someone, if we have a contract.
But I didn't have to have a budget finalized, so, I mean, we have to do this, the tentative budget. It's gotta go to advertisement here in a couple weeks.
So they.
If we have a contractor, we have people with one, and that's not good.
Negative comments?
Yes, ma'am.
We're paying somebody seven thousand.
So, and they were getting negative comments, come on.
I mean, in all fairness, you know how that goes, I mean, it could be nothing, but.
It was my understanding that they went to mow it, and it had rained really hard, and that they were told to leave, because they didn't wanna rut up the cemetery. And then that person happened to come to the cemetery during that time, but they were back on the schedule to do it just when it was drier, 'cause y'all know it's a swamp over there. And I, let know if I haven't seen it, what the comments were.
So we've got the way up, our employees, our equipment, their hours. What is the seven thousand dollars? Their hours and the equipment, it's at work seven thousand.
So if it was an employee, you'd have to dedicate them to only cutting grass. They would just, yeah, never be able to cut the grass, so you gotta do the, something.
I don't know, we catch one out, go outside, go, cut anything.
There was complaints back then, too.
Well, the cemetery, people was complaining about the grass. That's why we went into a contract, because people were complaining. All right, what's the will of council?
I, I liked what Fred said, maybe find someone different, a little bit less.
Y'all want me to put it in at the, uh, the rate it is now and put it out for bid? And then we'll have it budgeted?
Budget possibly for that, and then see what, I mean, 'cause I think we could get it for better than that.
And what, the contract is, is out. So we don't have to read right now? No, so it's.
I mean, like I said, half the year, or more than half the year, you're mowing once a month, and the other bunch of months twice a month.
Yes.
I agree with Brad's, y'all, let's budget it, but see if we can get it cheaper.
I wanted to use this as a calculator. It's probably, all right. All right, so that's gonna leave around twenty-five thousand, which we're gonna take, um, say sixty-five hundred out of that for the generators. So... You got about eighteen thousand seven hundred to decide what you wanna do with it. But also remember, we're starting the year off, we'll be starting off already in the red, so.
So Brad's gonna do this, and that's good?
That's probably in the similar budget, it's my fault.
That's all right, for sewer department, probably good, but it's taken some, got stamps.
But also remember that, if you have your fireworks, you're gonna have to get the donations for that. Unless y'all put it in it, so. I don't, I just wanted to make sure y'all know that I took it out of that.
Being a political year, this would be an easier time to do some fundraising amongst those candidates.
And letters could be sent now, I mean, it's... We got a plan now for next time.
We can put something on the website, too.
Well, we agreed on that. We get, have the fireworks, it'll be very, donations. Anybody else got anything? Candace, you got anything else? JB, did you have something else on the budget?
No, I didn't. But I will tell you that they got a bill, they did come in out there, that's right. I need to test you up for that, I'm making a pop for this.
No, no.
Yeah, you gave us some good news.
We got, he used heart pump truck record, straight fill, straight flush files, except.
I don't even think I have a thing.
What?
What they're gonna do with pump truck.
Just don't have much down there, but we have a couple yards, max.
Are we as comfortable as we can be right now with the budget? Yeah, we can do too much.
Set us up, monitor, we're open, you done that, it's all good, that'll be fixed.
I'll add to the end of repairs and maintenance, got the plan, and, um... Fire, fire department, um... Is, um, city's contributing a little bit, and county on the other rest of it, um... They still have a tangerine, though, just so y'all know, that's about twelve thousand dollars that we don't have the funds to get fixed right now. Um, so I don't wanna forget that for Shaq, I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. I will say it, and I already know that we need the money in the other departments, but a, um, street employee asked about raises again, because they hadn't gotten one in two years. So, I am saying it publicly.
You done your part.
Okay. Um...
And we, I'll go ahead and say, 'cause we've talked about this, we have to, next year, there has to be like a senior, we have to.
Yeah, everybody, they'll go.
That's it, that they'll get.
We do have, our insurance through FMIC is gonna go down four percent this year. I think we're about the only people that had anything going down, but it's going down four percent. Um, it's not a huge amount, but it's something, and, um...
I mean, four percent's only better than what I should do to get raises for anyway.
And then... There was another day came on. 'Cause I already added the cost of the guy's insurance going up, for their health insurance. Let me look, I apologize, I can't remember. On the rec side, um, I know Nikki's income was down just a little bit, but she's scheduling ballgames different this year, so that the concession sales will be up more.
And, which I'll say during rec, too, but we have, we were able to get more home games for football, so we're already getting a demand.
That's good, yes.
The games.
So, I don't think, I mean, the city hall is a, is a giant on us, um, because the power bill eats everything, and we haven't had any rentals that, you know, we didn't have any rentals this year. We're looking at, I can't remember when that grant's gotta be done, but we're not gonna have any rentals for a while. I think we had one in here for like a hundred dollars or something, but, you know, we lost all of that this past year. And that room's just getting worse, that we used to meet in, because you don't have any airflow in there, other than the decumittifiers. It's just like, I can't, Mr. Gary wants copies from when, before the food pantry started, but you gotta go back in that storage room with no air or any kind of airflow in there, and all the snail goo in there, and dig, and it takes, it takes your breath away when you walk in there. So I went back as far as I can pull up here.
At some point, we're gonna have to deal with that on some level in there, too, or we're gonna have to issue the records and, uh, lower portion of the building. It's gonna be bad, we can't do that to it. And it's gonna spray it and melt it.
And I don't have anything else for the budget that I can think of. And I don't, and I didn't bring in my date that we have to do it, but we have a spe, during the special week, and I'll send out a message to everybody, and send it to Mr. Boyd.
Does anybody else have anything on the budget? If not, can I have permission to adjourn the work, so, I don't need a motion to adjourn, I'm adjourned in the workshop, I'm sorry, I opened a regular meeting. Permission to approve consent agenda.
I didn't have any meeting minutes to put in here.
I'm sorry. Move on to the mayor's report, Mr. Gary?
Yeah, for one thing, a power bill, I met with the Gulf Power last Monday for a brief while, to what he found, what I found today. Uh, the air conditioner up here doesn't have a filter in it, which that means it's probably stuff all up on the coals, not reading like it should.
Which one is your name?
Yeah.
Oh, the one for the main office, we pulled that out last week, um, so, uh, we didn't have anymore, but we did pull it out last week, trying to get some airflow in there.
And then people put it back in there. But there, also, the wrenchers up in the ceiling for that air conditioner are pretty bad and dirty. I wouldn't hurt, if somebody come here and clean the ductwork on that one, I've never been done. That air conditioner controls those ones in hallway.
So.
Part, hallway.
Part of the hallway and those offices, mine is up in the attic, um... Because we changed that filter, 'cause the filter's above my desk, so we changed that, and we didn't have one that fit back, and we changed it last week, too. But it doesn't, y'all know how hot it is, so if you set it on seventy-two, it's like seventy-eight in there, and you can't feel anything in the hallway out there. Same in the winter, it'll be fifty-five degrees in the hallway.
I'll be honest, when I talk about the wrenchers stopped up, and we have them to clean. I'll get with Jason when he get the oil on that. Outside today on that sidewalk, there's thirteen lights burning during daytime. And the old showers over there, there's about six lights burning, burning twenty-four hours a day. And food pantry, I'm talking Gulf Power about that. Food pantry burning a lot more than what they think, or I think. But I did find online a meter today, I can get for under a hundred dollars. You plug that meter in, plug that appliance in, it'll tell you how many kilowatts that piece equipped burning. That's the only way to go, you know, for sure. The lights on the ball field back here. The lights on the ball field back here, are they on a different meter?
Yes, sir, they're all on. The back pole that's behind, um, their shop or the accelerator.
There is a meter back there?
I believe so.
Okay.
I don't get a bill, I, I get two bills for, here.
So you don't get a bill for a long time.
So I don't know which one it's attached to. You know, I don't know.
As I said, this, Gulf Power said the, uh. The one thing you lack, there were two different meters. One meter's got all this up here, the back hall, anything attached is a bill. Everything else on different meter.
So let the ball fields, I don't know.
I'll let you see if that's, this guy.
Yeah, yeah, double check. I don't know which meter it's.
Probably go to the, oh, is all that junk? It's all I got.
So, let me ask you a question, the lights that you're talking about outside that are burning all the time in the ones in the showers. Are they, is there?
Dust to go off?
Should be a part of ourselves, probably are, it's messed up, it's got located. It's buzzing in the shower and it's being cut off.
I wanna say that that, that, that hall probably when you cut the, when you cut the breaker that turns those off, all those off, it also turns off. Some of those refrigerators and freezers out there and that's why it's running.
The lights?
Because some, because when, um, somebody did a, had a beauty pageant and they flipped the breaker to get the right lights to come on, it turned off. So that's what I think is the reason those are on all the time, which. It's not a light switch turn them on, you turn them on and off at the breaker.
Yeah, I suppose, so big side anyway.
So, that's probably the, why those are running all the time.
Is that all you have, Mr. Gary?
Mm-hmm.
Attorney's report, Ms. Michelle?
We did have mediation on the traverse drive issue in, in past, which makes it, no agreement was reached. So we'll be moving towards a final hearing in that case. That's all I have.
Anybody have anything for the attorney? Alert report, Ms. Candace?
Um, y'all, add number two tenants' courts if you don't mind to the agenda, so I'll talk about that then, and I'm sure Michelle will have to tell us about it. I'm trying to look at a RIF grant, I've been working on it for a couple of weeks, um. It'll do basic rural infrastructure. Uh, because we're in a area of community, certain income level community, um. We could get the full hundred percent not matched, which is three hundred thousand, so it's not gonna fix a road. Um, but I'm not sure if we can use it to fix a building or update some of this stuff. So, um, I'm trying to find out on that. But if I turn it in, it don't cost all anything, you know, I'm not, if somebody else isn't writing it, it's not costing anything to try for it. But it is up to three hundred thousand. Uh, that's really all I have.
Does anybody have anything for the clerk? Other work report, Jason, who's not here. Fire department report.
Shaq was having a meeting tonight, so.
Okay. Recreation report, Ms. Nikki?
Let me start off with this. Of all these years, we were finally inducted into the Hall of Fame for Dixie softball. So I received this today. Um. And other news. We, uh, made y'all, well, let me. We had our jamboree this weekend in Nashville and all three of our teams won, so that was exciting, um, the all the kids are excited, all the Dixie. Um. We do have a total of, normally PYFA does however many teams you have, that's how many games you get, like home games. Well, this year we only have three teams, but we have five games because the organization has grown to eighteen teams. So, we got, we're getting a little bit more, so that's exciting, um. We might possibly host a playoff, I'm not sure, I wanna give other people, you know, a chance to host it just because we've done it the last two years. Um, last year PYFA actually asked us to do it, so I just told Cornell if he, you know, um, Deverian.
Cornell's still open that?
Yes. Uh, Deverian is the football coordinator, he's talked with the new football coach, so everything is good there. He goes, you know, we use it, he told us anything we needed, so that's awesome, um. I told y'all a few meetings back that we had issues with parents not happy with us because. Other teams were trying to recruit from Vernon and Vernon being small, we can't, like, we were literally on the verge of not having the one team. Or, well, two teams, and if that happens, PYFA is never. Allowed like just a two-team league or team, um, so. We actually had some people reach out to us from another organization that was having kids that they realized the cost of football is astronomical these days. Um, so they asked if some players could come to us and of course, you know, we welcomed them, so that, that helped us, um. Our teams are good, like, they're solid, we're okay on numbers at this moment, um. With all that being said, we did have issues with two other organization, or two other teams trying to recruit from us. Well, PYFA and the bylaws and kids, y'all want to go home or whatever, they have it in there where you can't recruit from other towns. Well, we had some coaches, we had some. Some players actually physically moved. So you don't have to release them, they physically moved and go to a different school, leaving like half a different address, so. These helps, these players that I'm talking about, they, we actually caught them trying to recruit. So, we as a group decided not to release players, um, to these, to other teams that we caught recruiting. Um, PYFA, the rea- the reason why we made the decision is in a meeting this year, PYFA cracked down on it pretty hard. Cause it was happening a lot in the organization itself. So, it's very frowned upon, like I said, models are there, um. So we are still not releasing players. Uh, we left it up to PYFA, they'll have the final say so, um. Final rosters are due today, we've already turned ours in. Cornell is the president of PYFA, he's very aware of the situation, um, the parents, we had a meeting, uh, Friday. It did not go as planned, we tried, not. Not one time has the parents, they're not happy, not one time have they contact, contacted Deverian, which is our football coordinator. They've always talked to me, well. I felt maybe that Deverian and some of the other coaches be here for the meeting because. They needed to tell their side of the story and the parents needed to confront them too. Like, you can't just come at me without telling everybody the whole situation. It got a little heated. The officers had to come, um. That's why they're here tonight, cause I didn't know if people were gonna show up or not, but they're not happy, they did threaten, uh, to call lawyer now. Whether or not they do, I don't know, um, like I said, they're not happy with us because we're not releasing them. They think it's personal, not one time has it ever been personal, um, the lawyer, listen, Michelle's aware, um.
Listen, the bylaws, it's, it's always gonna happen, as far as I'm concerned.
PYFA has the final say so as to where the kids can still play, like a player can still play for the other teams. That team is just ineligible for playoff games. So, the kids are still playing and the one team, they have told PYFA that they understand that they're. Like, they're okay with still having them play and not going to the playoffs, um. So, everybody is aware of everything, I just wanted to let y'all know that, you know, the meeting didn't go as planned at the end. I'm gonna stick beside my guys and the balls.
Thank you, Nikki.
You're welcome, for sure. There is that, and we will host our first home game the thirtieth of this month. So, if y'all wanna come out, it's gonna be really hot, I'm sorry.
And did you, I get cold today.
So what time does that start, Nikki?
They start at nine.
And when's that?
Uh, the thirty, August thirtieth, they're all here on Saturdays. And we are actually, this is the first time we've ever, we're hosting two other teams that are not our team because they didn't have nowhere to go. So, I thought that was kind of a good.
In that beginning, same.
Like, our kids will still be playing away, but I still have a group that we're gonna be here and hosting two other teams that, it's. I found out if you go to Panama and try on red fields, it's about twelve hundred dollars a game. So, we'll be getting all of the gate fee, we'll be getting all of the concession from those, and there'll be four games that day because they have all four interesting divisions.
So that's good.
Hopefully we're headed back in the right direction, but like I said, I just wanted to make y'all aware, um, another thing. Y'all have told me that I could lock the sportsplex, just like Shady Grove, um. It's been brought to my attention that there might be a gentleman staying out there in the boys bathroom. Um, I will, I'm looking at changing out the locks, just like making y'all aware, um, the city workers will have a key and everything like that, it won't be. And I also with Shady Grove and the middle school, using it, I found out Shady Grove, or the middle school doesn't have a key. To this, to Shady Grove, so, I'm going to just make, if y'all are okay, I'm just gonna make universal locks for like Shady Grove and the sportsplex. That way, I'm just going to give the school a key to Shady Grove, the school can give the coach, they're not having to call us or call Candace or call Jason if you're okay with that.
It's been done, it's been done like that in class?
I just don't want the city keys to be out there and, and my hands.
Is it all you have?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have anything we need? Present's report, um, I don't have anything at the moment, um, so we'll move on to number one repairs for the sewer plant. You're up.
Ready or not.
I made a list of just what we've got to pay there. How'd you get this?
I got it.
Oh, that's the same list, you know it again?
Yeah, just, just like stuff you done around, but I can.
The hall line.
Uh, shake generator, that's really not in my contract, but I know, definitely he's told me that the one at well three, which I know it is, needs to be repaired. Pretty quick. That's your only.
Which one need to be repaired?
Well three, it's the only blow you have right. And then, um, repair the blowers back plant, each one of them's got an issue. I don't think there's a lot of money in that, I mean, I can't pay it certainly. And then you go ahead and put somebody down there to waste, dig it. We're not, we're not getting ahead of it.
I probably take, tighten the waste every day.
You said all day last week, man?
Yeah, well.
For a little while.
Turn it off the night before, it'll be settled, first thing you want to do is start wasting. When you get stirred up again, you can switch it off, wait a couple hours, waste again, and then turn it on later, leave that even turn air out. So we can get enough wasted, but it's gonna take.
So any other stuff that you be doing, why you doing that?
Yeah, and I'm gonna find, name a couple more. That repair the skimmers, I talked to Air Mod today, he showed them, I was, that's him six, so I met him down there toward the end and. We went over the plant and the skimmers need to be fixed pretty quick, I said, well. We sell them all new for two hundred dollars each, and he ate. And, I mean, I mean, you don't have a lot of money, but that would be nice to be able to. Jump on it, you know, he said around two hundred dollars and they shipping UPS, so it's taking a little break charge truck truck. And then, repair the lights down there. And then, while he's wasting, you can check them, return lines, send dick down there constantly, stop them, if I showed him how to stop them, he might need that a couple times a day. And then just cleaning the baskets and the bar screen, washing down. And then repacking the EPL pumps and putting the ARBs back on, y'all have new ones, they're already, they're down there somewhere. Um, we bought them two months back. The wiring on compressors, probably need to get like, any electrician to put that in conduit now, cause. It's really not the way it's supposed to.
The air, the air compressor blowers.
And probably get somebody to look, whoever get to do that, get them look, hand in the chlorine there, it was brand new, but somehow it's. I checked it and I, I don't know what's up. And then Jason can tell you more about repairing that air leak at the head of the plant, that's broke twice, when it does, I mean, no matter if it's middle or not, it's got bits. And I think he knows what he needs to fix that. Those are the major things that somebody needs to think right now, and if. I have no idea what part for belt press will be, to get it just running for now. Or if it's reasonable, I suggest you do that, and just get it, just get it running.
And so with the waste.
Until we can get the grants coming in and redo everything. Center to me like it was just a couple of soul nights now, they may cost a thousand dollars a piece, I don't know, but.
But they're gonna let you know.
Yeah. And just like the skimmers, they, they should have broke that out, I asked them to, the skimmers on one clip. I don't know how long it's taking to get me that.
Didn't you say something about a air conditioner in the NCC?
They replaced it.
They did replace it.
I mean, there's a lot that needs to be done down there and I can let them know that this was.
That loop was definitely.
This is the stuff that needs to start.
It's a prospect.
Family walk around, stuff that needs to be done, baby.
Yeah, and, you know, much of the stuff, you know, it's like cleaning the baskets and all. That has never been a problem until we, we don't have bar screen. So all that trash is coming in. It's actually looks like a basket where clothes through and that, everything gets surrounded, stops it off.
Does Jason have? Have this?
Not that dark trade, but he'll have it for me.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give it to him this morning, but actually, I won't see. That's not, that's not a list, I mean, a complete list, but that's just what's.
That's the main thing, doesn't it, no, I'm.
Needs to be started this week or whenever you can start.
Hold multiple pages here in my hand.
And the rest of it's.
Yeah, we have, that was.
You know, well three, I put that on there too, but I was just. Pretty much all that is on well three, I actually didn't highlight it. And the generator is probably going to be. Um. Like the eye washes, y'all already got.
Yeah, you said that they were already down there.
Yeah. I mean, there's really. You get over that, just. For generators, I mean, the big difference is really small. Pretty much. Like the ARB, you already got it, pretty well. I didn't put anything for rub one into it because, until they figure out whether they can do the drainers. But they do have parts for that, they should already have. But they do have parts for that, that should already have.
So that is already on the side?
Some, I, I haven't seen it, but I know they're here. And it, it, it cleaning that spray thing? For me, I don't know how much is down there. They don't know how much is down there. But if there's that much, it can stop up again, they're probably looking at five hundred dollars and come back out, pull it back out. And I did tell them about an issue out there, but I, I paid those things over there. The way they valve it, half the field runs, or the other half, or you can make them both run. Well, by their Sunday, there's only two rows of about a six or seven row that's running. I don't know why the others aren't. I called them last night, told them to go.
That what you got, right? You're gonna give Jason a minute tomorrow, because... Anybody else have anything on number one? Number two, tennis courts.
Um, state appropriations gave, I want to say six hundred thousand, they built tennis courts in Vernon. What they do not fund, and United States Tennis Association has agreed to fund. Um, that's some of those meetings that, zone meetings that we did, that, that, because they wanna bring, you know, tennis back and have an area that, that the whole community can use. Uh, so Lori Simmons is someone that's headed, you know, she's spearheaded this for several years. And the company that's gonna do the tennis courts is ready to start. So what does the city need to do, Michelle, to, so that they can?
Is there like a layout of the brutal footprint of what they're gonna do?
I don't have, the, there was one mon- oh, six or eight months ago. Basically, they were gonna rebuild the ones that are there, which is two. And then put the other four, I think it's four, over where that dirt pile was. And that would also include a small, um... Bathroom concession building.
Yeah, exactly. What we talked about, since we all have ideas, and later on, when we go for grants, where the rest of the track was not having the whole grass part of the track covered.
Yeah, because it's used by several, people use that grassy part of the track.
So they wouldn't tear down any part of the track itself, do we?
No.
They're gonna fix what's there, and then come where the dirt pile was and set up the other four.
I think they can close the other four, like, build a whole front neighborhood or something?
I don't know about that. I just saw the original, like, you know, they gave several ideas, and I said, y'all can't put them here. And then that's when I brought that to y'all. And, um, I mean, it, it should be really nice. Um, of course, they're for the school, but the whole community gets to use, you know, gets to benefit from them. Of course, you can also play pickleball and other things on tennis courts. But, um, uh, Lori would probably wanna try to get with Nikki and host some tournaments and different things, you know, that would bring people from around Walton County, Bay County here, you know, which would be a good...
She does have a lot of money.
Yeah, she's, Lori has absolutely rocked this thing and getting this done. So, um...
She's needing to get started though.
But do we need, does the city need to do anything?
So I'm trying to, um, I'm not familiar with where the tennis courts are going. But I was looking at my historic correspondence, and there were some questions about title?
That was for grant, that was for, if we applied for a grant.
Okay.
But apparently state doesn't care.
Now, we still got the title issues while, while we have, they would get...
Yeah, and Ron's supposed, Ronnie's supposed to do those.
Yeah.
But, um, as far as the, as far as the state appropriations grant, they're, they're set to do them.
In relation to this building where it's...
So if you went to McFighter, do you know McFighter, Michelle? Okay, so come out right here on Yellow Jacket Drive. Instead of going to the lot, come out this way. You'll hit McFighter.
Okay.
Take a right.
Do you know where the church is?
No, I'm looking at the map.
If you...
Okay.
Yes.
So there's two in the center.
With you on down.
Are they with you on down, right?
Yes, they're gonna rebuild those, and then they're gonna put the others...
Two over back there.
Right.
Yeah, back in its corner. Where the old green house is.
Okay. Okay. So I think you're gonna be fine. That, that's not anywhere near there, so I'll just turn it out. They probably want, if not admitted from this meeting, with the council's report, that they want some kind of resolution.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve the tennis courts going in to being right there where they are now? Four in a horn? Do I have a motion to approve? Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh...
Any opposed? Motion carried. And with that, if there is no other business, I have much to resign. Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any...